Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Can the clerk, Ms. Concolino, please call the roll?
Yes. Start with Member Ashby.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Chenier.
Here.
Gera.
Here.
Jennings.
Here.
Carr.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum, and this meeting is broadcast live this evening. There's a replay on Saturday at 7:00 PM on our Metro Cable Channel 14. If you wish to speak, please complete a speaker slip that's located on the ledge in the back and submit it to our clerk at the front. We also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices if you need them, and if you have a cellphone, please silence it. Thank you.
So we are going to adjourn... Is this on?
Yes.
Yes. We're going to adjourn this meeting at the end in memory of Penny Castanis, and I want to speak about her in just a moment, but I want to begin the meeting by asking her husband, our former colleague from District 7, Terry Castanis, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Altogether, please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Penny Castanis passed away on May the 31st, and yesterday, her life was celebrated at the Greek church in East Sacramento. And I know Councilmember Gedda and I had the opportunity to attend, and we wanted to begin the meeting by recognizing what an important and special person she was and your whole family is to the greater Sacramento community. We know Terry because he served in the same position that we served in for many years. And Penny brought an equal passion and dedication to the community. Fifty-plus years, as our memorial resolution says, in the classroom and the library where she was most at home, earning her MA in music education. After a brief period of teaching, she earned her librarianship credential and began a long career as an academic librarian and library administrator. She was one of the state leaders in founding cutting-edge literacy programs, and she left an indelible mark on school libraries throughout Sacramento. And I remember meeting her and talking to her on many occasions, always with a light in her eyes, always with a spirit, always, you know, asking what she could do to help others. And, you know, Terry and your daughter and your son were our deepest sympathies to you on a tremendous loss. Fifty-six...how many years of marriage? Fifty-six? Fifty-six years of marriage. She was a patient woman, by the way.[232.12][232.12](Laughter). In all seriousness, we care for your family, and we're here for you in your time of need. You have a couple other colleagues that want to say a few words. Councilmember Gedda?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Terry, thank you for being here today, and I also want to express my deep condolences and gratitude for all that Penny had done. And I had had the pleasure of serving with Penny on the Sacramento State Alumni Association Board of Directors. We came in...we were part of the same freshman class of alumni board members, and if there was anyone who stood out in our class, it was definitely Penny. She was not only a double hornet and proud of her advanced degree, but took on the issue of, to heart, about giving opportunity to more people, and focused her time and dedication to the scholarship committee. And when we went on the Capitol Campaigns, she was never one to be shy about the ability and the need to give back. And she was the most vocal about the issue to help and encourage more young women and women of color to be active and to look at higher education, to pursue their dreams. And not only that, but she embodied and understood the issue and the struggle of what many immigrants go through today. And I didn't know, but I learned at the beautiful service that she had helped, you know, her mother learn English by reading to her on her lap. And, you know, and I could relate to that experience in that case. And so the fact that she focused her life on literacy and on education and making sure that everyone, regardless of what age they started in their path, what their history of origin, of nationality or ethnicity, or what gender, that they could empower themselves. And, you know, till the very, I think, very end, Penny, even when she was going through her treatment and chemo, would not miss an executive committee board meeting with the Alumni Association because she wanted to make sure that we were doing everything we could to help future students. So a proud hornet, and I think as in the obituary said, a more than enthusiastic hornet. You know, we will miss Penny, but more importantly, I want to thank her for everything she has done for so many of us, for our future.
Thank you very much, Eric. Jeff, Councilmember Harris?
Terry, I also wanted to offer my condolences. I didn't know Penny so well, but in the times that I spoke to her, she seemed to me to be a woman possessed of great wisdom and also strong opinions. You know, it was a lot of fun to talk with her and engage on issues, and I'm very pleased that I got to know her, if only briefly, and my heart goes out to you.
Thank you. Terry, we have a memorial resolution here for you. If I could come down and present this to you, be honored.
Well, I'll come down.
Well, I would just like to say thank you so much. I'm humbled to receive this honor from all of you. I had 13 wonderful years, and I was encouraged to do so by Penny. Penny was the person who said, "Terry, you've got to run," and I followed her lead. You know what they say, behind every great man, there's a greater and a smarter woman, and that's certainly the case with Penny. You're all very, very kind, and this means a great deal to me and to my family. My daughter Sophia is with me, trying to be a photographer over here, but I am very, very grateful and humbled with this recognition, and I wish all of you good health, and thank you again.
That's Peter. We're here for you.
Thank you, Terry.
City family.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Terry, I just want to speak on behalf of the thousands and thousands of kids whose lives Penny touched, whether it was in the classroom, or whether it was in the library, or whether it was after school or before school. I want to be their voice today to say thank you and thank your family for loaning her to us and the impact that she left on every single person she touched. And I know those kids loved her with all their heart and soul, and I know that they will be better, and they will pursue their dreams because she pushed them to that, and they one day will make the same impact that she made, but there will be thousands of them that will have done that. And so I just want to thank her on behalf of all the kids that she touched.
Thank you very much. I'm sure she's listening, and together, we'll make a better world. You bet.
Better believe it.
Thank you.
See you. Always your home here, okay?
Thank you.
I know Councilmember Carr has an announcement at the beginning of the meeting as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the last several months, I've been getting queries about the health of our friend and former Councilmember Bonnie Pennell. Had an opportunity to visit with her and her family, and I will tell you, one, she is resting peacefully at home. She is not in any pain. She is being cared for by hospice as well as her family. Her son, Darrell, is there with her all the time, and her sisters and other siblings visiting, and they are taking care of her. She has a really strong handshake. She latches on and holds on, and however, she's not taking any visitors. The family asks that people not come by. She's not up to seeing that. But the family does appreciate all the concern that's being expressed by the community, all the well-wishers that have expressed to me and her other friends inquiring about her health. The family has asked that in lieu of flowers and cards, that people who are so disposed can make a donation to the Parkinson's Foundation of Northern California. And we put the website here, that's ParkinsonSacramento.org, and the telephone number for those who are so willing to make a contribution in her name. And we will continue to visit with her and make sure that she's cared for, and thank you, everyone, who has offered expressions of sympathy and concern for her.
Thank you very much, Mayor, for bringing sad news, really, to our attention, but Bonnie, doesn't surprise me that she would want people to donate to Parkinson's research, supposed to flowers or cards. And if you're watching this, Bonnie, we love you, and we'll follow through. Thank you. All right. Let us begin with public comments on matters not on the agenda. We've got twenty-some? Okay?
Okay.
Let's begin.
So we will call three at a time, as is our normal practice, and we will start with Victor Brazelton, followed by Laura Hanson and Joan Marie.
Thank you again for the opportunity to talk. I wanted to speak about housing, and I wanted to speak about some of the comments that I heard last week and the approach, and some of the things that I've heard from council. One of the things that was menken is that a top-down approach, that housing will eventually trickle down to those in need. And I think my largest concern about that approach is that it's not going to happen fast enough to be able to help those folks inside of need who need housing. And I think part of the strategy that needs to take place is not only going to be that kind of top-down approach, but also a bottom-up approach that's going to allow people to have access to housing. The other thing that was really concerning to me also during that time is that we talk about having a council that passes resolutions and then stands behind them. Mr. Carr talked about that as being a sanctuary city. And when we look at what we're trying to do in providing things for a sanctuary city, I think that also stands in a place where we have to look at how we treat folks who are un-homed in the city. To look at providing sanctuary for people and decriminalizing a state of being and to also, at the same time, criminalize an economic state of being, at which we understand and what we have to control from the council side is going to take a while to do, means that we should probably look at ways in which we change the aspect at which we provide sanctuary, not only for one group, but other people throughout the city. The other council members talk about how we need to have more women on the council, and what I believe when we look at...and not only do I agree with that, but I believe that we have to look at more of what a feminine perspective or sustainable perspective of development would look like. Because when we have children who are homeless, who are trying to go to school, and our focus is on how we're going to provide a safe place in the city in education, sustainability in our development for those children are also going to be really important.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hey, Laura?
Hello, council and mayor. And my name's Laura Hanson. I'm a native Sacramento, and I agree with a lot of what Victor has to say, and what we're here to talk about tonight speaks to that. Among other things that I do in the community, I'm co-founder of Compassionate Capital Region, along with Joan Marie, who will speak after me. And we're here today to give you an update on the International Compassionate Cities Movement and an invitation to Sacramento to become an official city of compassion. It is a challenging time that we live in in America right now, and when we hear about attacks such as those in Portland, and I could name a new city every week, we know that as a country that is not the America we think we should be, and we know we can do so much better. Violence does have its origin. It starts within a person first. People get angry when they're in pain, in fear, isolated, and unheard. And Sacramento is changing fast. It's a very exciting time, and personally, I've been waiting my whole life for this moment when we have so much going for us in taking the next step as a city. And now is the time to establish an aspect of Sacramento's brand as a city, that it can demonstrate diversity and inclusion, a truly inspired quality of life, while growing the economy, attracting more tourists, and drawing top talent in companies. In September, Compassionate Capital Region will co-host a statewide conference convening our state's representatives, movement makers, community organizers, and leaders in racial justice, healthcare, economic justice, environmental justice, and that's just to name a few. This one conference is part of a four-year campaign where we can feature Sacramento as a leader in what it means to be a great place to live. Thank you very much, and Joan will continue. Yeah?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
This is very helpful, and I've talked to other mayors throughout.
I know. I've made sure that has happened.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Joan? Following Joan will be Janet Fricki and Joan Louis Tinnard.
Thank you. Over 197 cities across the country have found a way forward to reducing violence, closing the income gap, improving public safety, and sparking creativity. It's called the Compassionate Cities Initiative. Over 50 cities and counties have passed resolutions and have integrated the principles of the Charter of Compassion into other civic initiatives. Both Laura Hanson and myself are on the Board of Compassionate California, a statewide organization that promotes the Compassionate Cities Initiative and helps guide communities through the process of becoming a compassionate city. Compassionate Capital Region was organized in 2015 to raise awareness of the International Compassionate Cities Initiative and to inspire cities and counties to sign the charter. Over 60 community organizations and businesses are now part of our growing network in support of compassionate Sacramento. What being a city of compassion can mean for Sacramento? One, it can have a positive effect on an individual citizen's perception of others within their community who hold different beliefs and traditions. The city mayor and council members, as well as organizations, can use Sacramento's designation in their own projects and call to action for inclusion, diversity, and civic engagement. Connection to partnership with worldwide networks of cities and mayors around shared engagement and economic development goals. The next steps is we have presented an invitation to the city council, and we are asking the city council to adopt a resolution for Sacramento to be a city of compassion. Number three, the date would be set for public presentation of the resolution. And number four, the opportunity for a compassionate Sacramento team to either, one, form under the mayor or a council member's office, or two, city representatives participate in a community-led compassionate Sacramento team with the guidance of Compassionate Capital Region if desired.
Thank you.
Wish we had more time.
Well, that's okay. We're going to...I'm going to ask that this matter, which I'm familiar with and supportive of the concept, be referred to the city's lawn ledge committee. Councilmember Chenier is the chair, and we'll take this up, and there'll be a chance for a little bit more of a thorough vetting.
Thank you.
To get the questions asked, we'll start considering this, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next.
Janet?
Good evening. It takes a lot for me to reach my saturation point. I have now reached my saturation point. I've been coming for about two and a half years. I am appalled...I'm going to repeat, appalled about the lack of help that this city is giving to their citizens who are homeless. I was a...a lot of different things, but one is I was a policy analyst in Schwarzenegger and Brown's administration, in their committee, before I retired. I am going to now start, and I was pretty damn good, excuse my French, I am now going to start researching, again, I was a policy analyst, on how much money you guys have authorized for things that are not helping the homeless, like taking away the bathroom at Caesar Chavez Park, spending about a quarter of a million, what water fountains you're not putting up. I was expecting and actually was going to come here and ask what I could do to help tonight, honestly, until I saw that there once again is nothing on the agenda helping the homeless people, nothing on the agenda for Mr. Warren. Again, it takes a lot for me to reach my saturation point, but it's on now. Good luck to you guys.
Joan?
I'd like to say good evening, everybody. I'm glad to announce, happy to announce, I have a one-bedroom apartment in South Sacramento. I have a roommate, my boyfriend. Our rent is so high here in Sacramento, $1,000 a month. Food is high, cars are high. Even donation from Goodwill, some things are high. $95,000 A.D. will be here. Please stop raising prices. The day we moved in, someone told us about a three-bedroom home for $825 a month in Valley High. I'm glad we have the one-bedroom because there's no room in the end, but for us, the three-bedroom home would be suitable for $825 a month. A backyard for our dog, shit, beautiful, damn, we couldn't wait. We were living in a motel and spent $3,000 to be together, waiting for this one-bedroom apartment. Again, I'm glad for the one-bedroom apartment. A three-bedroom home, we could have had, not bad for the price, $825 a month. Thank God, and thank you guys for your help.
Okay, Eric Frame is next, and then Richard Wake, McWorthy, and James Clark.
Hello. It doesn't make any economic sense to not help people. In fact, it makes sense to help people economically. I'll give you an example. If we start working on a tiny house village, what we got is we got more jobs to create that tiny house village. We got people off the street, living in homes now, and being off the street, you know, that does? That makes the Sacramento area more of a destination city, as you guys have said you In addition, once you get people off the street into homes, you can start, you know, building them up with some counseling perhaps, and put them into the economy, back into the economy to be consumers, you know? Makes sense. What doesn't make sense is what we're doing now, which is the opposite of helping people. It's criminalizing people. The no camping ordinance is inhumane, as Mayor Steinberg said in 1995. Not only is it inhumane, but it's also unconstitutional because it breaks the 14th Amendment, which says, "No state shall deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." Now, I know you passed unconstitutional law or ordinance, so kind of skip through that. No one was watching you do that, I guess, but we need to repeal it because it's unconstitutional and inhumane. So I guess the question is, why? Why are we criminalizing people instead of helping them when helping them would in fact boost the economy, make Sacramento a destination city again? So why? What is it? Why? Why? Why, why, why? You know? That's the revolutionary question. Why are we criminalizing instead of helping when economics, the economy, which you guys...I know you guys, big capitalists, you want the economy to be good. You want the economy to be good, so if we help people, we can improve the economy, you know? So it doesn't make sense. So I ask why, and I'm wondering why, and I don't know. I can come up with some theories if you want. Perhaps it's your bosses want you to...
Your time is up.
Criminalize the homeless, perhaps?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hey, Richard?
Don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. We can help you. We can help you.
Thank you.
Richard Wake?
Good evening. Richard Wake, City Council, District 5. I just want to take a second to commend Mayor Steinberg for his position on Donald Trump withdrawing from the Paris Accords. I think that was good, but let's put some teeth behind that and get a resolution passed here at the city council to show that we're for reducing greenhouse emissions here in Sacramento. I think that would be a very good idea, to take a strong position. But, you know, a lot of these meetings, I've been commenting about the homeless issue. I wasn't sure what I was going to say tonight, but at the last meeting, an explanation was provided as to why the issue wasn't going to be on the agenda, and you sir provided a very reasonable, well-thought explanation. But it was stated at the last meeting that there was supposed to be a workshop tonight, I believe, in regards to opening up the churches and nonprofits for the homeless, and there was also going to be a robust discussion about that, as well as Councilmember Warren's proposal for the homeless shelter. So, you know, I think we can all see that the level of frustration is going up here, and, you know, and I understand, after 30 years of being involved in local politics and sitting through a lot of different types of meetings and central committee meetings, I get that these things can be frustrating and for all parties involved. I understand that. But come on, folks, let's do something, okay? Let's get this resolved. Let's come up with a meaningful solution. Let's get...I don't know what behind the scenes is going on, but maybe someone, after I'm done speaking, could offer another reasonable explanation as to why these things are not with agenda, on the agenda, and come up with a concrete date that this is going to be voted on, and everybody will have their chance to get the public hearing and vet this publicly, and get the churches open, the homeless shelters open, and the nonprofits, and allow Councilmember Warren to have his due. Can somebody please give an explanation tonight? Thank you.
Mc?
Good afternoon, panel.
We would like to say hats off to the homeless people. They have brought more facts to this body than the city council and the previous mayor and this mayor here have brought. Open the eyes of people. But the fact is that the housing will never end, because that's how the city bring money in, on the backs of the homeless people. You know what I'm saying? It will never happen, people, because it's money...when you see a grant from federal government, and then these homeless people walk around here, and they got average $600, and you can't open up a place for them, it's sad. But go back to our last month of the convention center. These are the things, people, that I follow. How many people can come in here? I talked to this young man here that finished academy, and talk to this point. You are blowing the taxpayers' money. You are blowing the taxpayers' money. Wake up, people. You putting money in something that never was audited on, that was red ink from the get-go, to convention center, was a red ink. that was red ink from the get-go, to convention center, was a red ink, and you know that. Where is the audit on what there's property? Not there. And also, we look at a resolution for all entities that you own. Smurt, Jorina, we would like to see every six months, a audit, a finance audit, not the policy audit, which we have seen here several times. We want to know three steps: the income, how it's going out, and who is getting the contracts. That's all we gotta do. Three steps to it. We don't have to have all the other stuff with the city. Just those three entities, and that would show the people that this city will never grow, because it can't not ever grow out of debt. And you will continue putting them in debt by telling the people, "We gonna do this," and you're not gonna do it by debt, people. It's not gonna happen. It's a situation that you gotta wake up. You gotta bring the private sector in. The money and entertainment is made from the people that promote them. That's the facts. People promote them, makes the money. The people that...
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
...filling don't make the money.
Following James will be Nicole Castor and Nikki Jones.
So first, I want to respond about the rent control and the idea of trickle-down being an effective way to deal with rents. Well, if we look at Bush Senior and his trickle-down economics, we see where that ideology leads us. It led to more disparity in incomes, more poverty, more people on the streets. And I think we should take a point from history on that, you know? Trickle-down does not work. It just gets the people on the top having more and more, while the people on the bottom suffer more and more. And then to talk about the camping ordinance and the compassion side of things. You know, for years, people have been coming to these council chambers and being ignored. Then, when people get upset and angry, you shout them down, you change the meeting time so that they don't have to be here, or that they can't be here. I mean, look how empty this chambers is. It's never this empty, you know? Gee, I wonder why? Oh, yeah, because most people are still trying to get a home from work. You know, it shows the exact opposite of compassion. What it shows is a total disregard. You're still not hearing the people. You still don't pay attention to what we're saying. Half the time, you guys are looking down at your computers while people are talking. You're munching on random things, you know? It shows a total lack of what we're here to actually address. And then the fact that, once again, we hear, "Oh, this will be on the agenda for next week," and then it's not on the agenda once again. Once again, it's getting pushed back, while people are still suffering in the streets. And now you're having the cops tell all the people downtown, from what I'm hearing, that they can't be downtown after 5 o'clock? 25 officers last night, pushing homeless people around? Yeah, way to have compassion.
Nicole?
Hi, Nicole Castor, Green Party of Sacramento County. And I have two of my fellow counselors from our county council. So I came across this thing from one of our county greens, and this is happening, I'm gonna read from a screenshot. This is happening on L Street, 2025 L Street. There is a development project where public trees are going to be removed. And so we wanted to bring this to the city council, because we were concerned about it, and because it's for a private, you know, whatever, I don't know what it is, but it's for development, it's public trees. Now, I went on the city of Sacramento website, and it's talking about how only 20% of the urban forest, is what they call it, is comprised of public trees. The rest is like in our backyards. And that there is a department that's focused on planning, protecting, maintaining trees, located in our public spaces, and how much of the multiple benefits that trees provide for us, that, blah, 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 where is it? Oh, that it's the one thing that actually increases in value as they age. So I think that's interesting. And so regarding the upholding of the Paris Agreement, that just happened recently, the Cities for Climate, it says on some website that I found, that the goal is to intensify efforts to meet each of our cities' current climate goals, and a push to meet, or a push for new action to meet the 1.5 degrees Celsius target, and work together to create a 21st century clean energy economy. So we figure that cutting down trees definitely hurts that goal. So we want to come to you and see if this council can do something about it. The trees are set to be cut down on the 9th of June, so that's just a couple days away, it's on or after that date.
Thank you. Can we have somebody look into this and just report back?
Should it, how can I be in contact, or?
We'll make sure we get your information over here, and we'll be in contact, okay? Thank you very much for testifying. Appreciate it, and bringing this to our attention.
Hey, Nikki? Following Nikki is Greg Glavonovich, and then Thomas, sorry, I can't read it. Thank you.
Sacramento is in crisis, with a shortage of over 60,000 affordable housing units, 60,000 families not able to meet their rent. Folks who need housing units that are affordable. With rents unbelievably skyrocketing and median income down, more of our neighbors are struggling every day, struggling, yes, to pay their rents that are rising, but then to pay bills, to pay food, to pay for transportation. For those of you who do not often see beyond your own social circles, tens of thousands of Sacramento residents are fighting every day to stave off homelessness. They are making choices about what gets paid, about if they can spend the time away from family to hold a second or third job. We know that you insist, as you cut the inclusionary ordinance and turn a blind eye to citywide astronomical rent hikes, that you have committed yourself to not upset developers like Black Pine, that are on every corner now, that aren't required to build one unit for poorer, working-class people, and they haven't. But I ask, at what cost will we appease the already rich when the working class cannot afford to live in the city? Are you open to the displacement of workers if they are not making the two and a half times the state median wage that is required to meet median asking rents here in Sacramento? Goodbye service workers, goodbye security guards, goodbye preschool teachers, goodbye social workers, goodbye artists, and so on, and so forth, and doing nothing to protect these tenants who are engaging in class war. You are sitting back as people are pushed further and further out and tragically onto the street, just as previous councils sat back as racist redlining in real estate and loans literally created what we understand to be high-risk communities today. You are sitting back as they wage class war. I know this class war is not your heart's desire, mayor, city manager, council people, I know it is not. But it will be the result of your actions if you continue to prioritize markets above quality of life.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, you mentioned a 20% to 25% self-imposed production level for affordable housing. It hasn't happened. It isn't happening.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Two minutes.
Is that not working? It never will.
That's the rule.
Legal requirements are the only thing that will work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
This speech is based on the chancellor UC Davis saying he was shocked there were so few black engineering majors at Davis. Already gave half of the speech last week. I haven't started yet. She's passing it out. She's passing out the speech, everybody. I haven't started yet. You gotta go back to two minutes. I'm going to the middle of the speech on page two, where it says, "Why men are so much better at math than women." I haven't started yet. She's passing out the speech.
No, no, you got your two minutes. Please finish.
I can't finish it. I'll have to come a third time.
Have the speech. We're happy to submit it.
Why are men so much better at mathematics and reading a map and giving directions than a woman? It's because men are ruled by the occipital cortex in the brain, back here. Women are ruled by the temporal cortex, whose function is hearing and emotions. That is why women like to hear sweet "nothing's whispered" in their ear in the nighttime, even if it's not true. The occipital cortex is involved in spatial items and visual information, like throwing a football, shooting a basketball, looking at beautiful sunsets, waterfalls, and women. It's our eyes that get us into trouble. Throwing a football, a basketball, these are hand-eye coordination skills, hunting skills. The father Willie Mays rolled a large softball to him when he was two years old to develop hand-eye coordination. Pete Maravich's father was a basketball coach and would be on the driveway while Pete would watch as a youngster. His father would shoot baskets and dribble around like he was having a lot of fun. The parents have to get the boys excited about engineering and learning. Take the boys to San Francisco and the Golden Gate Bridge, or slightly north of there, the Muir Woods, 300 feet tall. Get the boys excited in biology. And I already mentioned last time, Black Purdue documentary film about the engineering program at Purdue and the turbulent times in 1968.
Mr. Glavonovich?
I didn't finish.
Your time is up.
Watch Black Purdue documentary film. 55 minutes.
Thank you.
Thomas Dupree? Following Thomas will be Pastor Gainsborough, and the last speaker is Jeffrey Tardigal.
Is Pastor Gainsborough here? He's here. He's just trying to get by here. Pastor? Of course. Take your time, sir. Is Pastor Gainsborough the testifying, or is it Jeffrey?
Thomas first, and then Pastor.
Thomas first. I apologize. Okay, good. Good evening, sir.
So I'm glad to be able to stand here and express my concern over most of the veterans, of which I'm right now in Sacramento. And they're not doing anything for us to get us a place to live. So I'm at the place on I Street. And basically, I have, they're feeding me well, but ultimately, I have no place to go when this is all said and done. There's no step-up for me to be at the veterans' home right now.
Okay, so where are you now, sir?
The Salvation Army.
Salvation Army. And are you working with a navigator or a caseworker to try to find you some...
I talked to them this morning, and they said that they're looking into getting me for AHRA or something like that.
Okay, S H R A. And how much time will they allow you to stay at the Salvation Army?
There's no definition.
Okay, so what we can do is continue to make inquiries on your behalf with both the Salvation Army, with S H R A, but also with Sacramento Steps Forward, so that we can do everything possible, because you seem very willing and desirous of...
Yes. You know, there was a time I was working as an engineer in Sacramento.
And you're a veteran, and you're trying to find a permanent place to live.
Yes.
So let us, okay, so Sergeant Kelly, if you could please talk to the sergeant again, and we will continue, I know, because you've been here every week. I'm glad that you are currently, as I understand it, in shelter, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we want to make sure that you stay in shelter, and that we do everything we can to try to find you a longer-term housing option, which I know is hard for everybody, but...
Perfect solution, yes.
One at a time, so we'll try to help sergeant, okay? Do you go that way, we'll...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay?
I appreciate that.
Do our best to try to watch out for you.
Okay, Pastor Gainsborough?
Good evening, mayor and council. It is a beautiful evening. Beautiful evening for everyone that's alive. And I miss the sorrow of the passing of the gentleman's wife, I take it, but it was very kind, the comments that were made. The bubonic plague, the Black Death in Europe, killed tens of millions of people. But the plague was not the problem. At least, it wasn't the initiator. The Black Plague was caused because of rats that were carrying the disease. Currently, the homeless problem is partially caused by a lack of an immediate rent control proposal, because as the housing, as two weeks ago, we had people talking about their housing had doubled or gone up by 30 or 60%. As the housing increases, the number of affordable units, and we're 60,000 affordable housing units short. Now, I can throw statistics, just like you can throw statistics, but the point is, 13,000 people signed up on food stamps as homeless, not the point in time of 2,500 homeless. That is a 500% differential of the reality versus what steps forward, which I go to their monthly meetings and was at it last week. But the affordable housing situation is related to the lack of rent control. I saw a picture of all of the council, it's beautiful, on the city council website. All of you were smiling, beautiful smiles on it. Turn to the webpage and see it, except for Councilman Warren, because he's been fighting for you to join him to stand up for a temporary tent city. I want to see 100% stand up for the temporary housing for the homeless. God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeffrey? And then we do have Lorraine Brown after Jeffrey.
Mayor, council members, I was hoping to get the last word in, because I will mention Frances Grace, yesterday noon. Mayor, do you know who I'm talking about?
Mrs. Grace Child?
R I L.
I understand. Is it appropriate?
And like Bonnie, some of those people that have been pioneers and workers. So I hope you figure appropriate tribute.
We will. I just found out an hour or so ago that Frances Grace Child passed away yesterday, I believe.
Noon time.
Frances was an incredible groundbreaker, an advocate for people with disabilities. She was actually my opponent when I ran for the Assembly in 1998. We ended up becoming dear friends, and I was very sorry to hear about her passing today. We will memorialize her appropriately, but we just found out.
Well, and that was what was going to be most of my last word. Fortunately, I've lost a minute of time to turn around and remind you...
Interrupted you, so go ahead.
Well, reminds you, you passed a thing related to the convention center of a reconstruction, for both the SAC Valley Station, and, again, mayor, you were there for the Democratic Convention, taking place at the Sacramento Convention Center. One of the things that is missing from both SAC Valley and from the convention center is any kiosk related to public transportation. I've spoken to Jay, I've spoken to Steve, and I've spoken to Regional Transit Board in this regard. But you guys are the entity that needs to apparently be motivated to do something about putting, like what's at the city library, like what's at Sacramento State, as a kiosk with a map, because every single weekend, people come in SAC Valley Station, and every single weekend, people use the convention center for something, and they have no clue of how in the world, other, "Let's stand outside, and there's gonna be a bus coming by sometime." It may be an hour later or longer. Plus, there's other changes that are going on that Regional Transit needs to deal with. But the other comment I will offer to you is, what you have here, public comment, and you need to think about how you are utilizing public comment. Last part, I will say, is which I...
Thank you. I gave you an extra minute here. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Lorraine?
Good evening. I am Lorraine Brown, psychologist. I want to address the cyber monopolies that are going on. It's discrimination. We don't have phones. We have to go through cyber. I feel like... I feel like we're being pressured. The way Amway and Diamonds and Rhinestones, whatever they call themselves, would try to recruit us to be part of their organization, and it ended up to me being unethical. I think that part of our freedom is the freedom of choice. And I just noticed, coming up here, if you want to have a bike, you have to have, get us on Google Earth, and they want to control all of our communication, and they discriminate. And some of the people are not very ethical. And I had patients at Ford Hood Military that were traveling, and they thought it was a good idea, and they put a lot of money into Amway, and they lost $50,000, hundred thousands of dollars. They're not very nice people. I believe that there is a tie-in here with Google Earth and eBay and Craigslist. They're trying to monopolize, and I really resent that. My other issue is, and I really think we need to look at that, that's not who we are. We're not a bunch of thugs. Identity theft, which I've experienced, and everybody I know that's a professional person experienced it in the '90s, is equivalent to cattle rustling and horse rustling and rape and what they did to the rainforest. I understand that people have said to me, "It's a compliment when people steal your credentials and your passport and your identity and your work product and your intellectual property." It's equivalent to the sheriffs telling me in the '80s, when I used to do counseling in Albuquerque in Texas, that the women that got raped, gang raped, they enjoyed it. We can't, we don't think like that, do we? I hope not.
No, but thank you very much for your testimony.
Please, let's address this.
Appreciate it. Is that the last of the public comments?
It is.
I do want to, now that that public testimony is over, because the question was raised, and I do want to inform the members of the House and the public what our proposed schedule is around the homeless issue, which we all agree is compelling and in many ways getting worse. The state of California, the Department of Health Care Services has given tentative approval to the city's application, only city in the state, the city's application for the whole person care grant. We are awaiting federal Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services' final approval on the grant. We hope to have that over the next week, although we're not sure. Regardless, we are agendizing next Tuesday, June 13th, an action for the council to consider accepting the grant. The grant is, I've said previously, is a combined $16 million a year for four years, $64 million, to build the continuum of care, including outreach, case management, services, combined with the vouchers we've set aside for housing, to make the most serious effort and significant effort ever made in this city to try to combat this terrible problem and the suffering that so many people are dealing with. We are still working with Councilmember Warren on his proposal, and in good faith. There are still questions about what might be the best particular site, as well as a number of operational issues, and we're working hand in glove with Councilmember Warren to try to make that right. In addition, when we talk about a shelter workshop, we are working, and our staff is working intensively on a series of options, including what we mentioned previously, namely, amending the current city ordinance to make it clear that churches, synagogues, mosques, and other nonprofits can provide indoor shelter for people without any question about its legality. In addition, we are looking at expedited permitting for tiny homes, which is a major, major issue, as well as many members of the council, including Councilmember Harris and others, were continuing to work to locate some additional actual shelter sites with the capacity of hopefully several hundred additional beds for people. We plan currently, given all of that, next week will be the whole person care hearing and hopefully action to begin accepting the grant. We're looking at June 27th for the shelter workshop, not just to talk about it, but to take specific actions on a number of items that will allow us to move forward on the emergency shelter situation. I wish it were tomorrow, but we're all doing the very, very best we can. And I do believe that this whole person care opportunity is a singular opportunity to make a dramatic difference. More next week. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the consent calendar.
Okay.
And--
Mr. Mayor.
I know we do have some public testimony. Councilmember Carr?
Just wanted to add, because the--
Yeah.
The group that came in a couple of weeks ago about Cedar Ridge, and the council asked for an update on where we were on that. I have met with the tenants there, the representatives from management with the Rental Housing Authority Association. I've spoken with the owner of the complex. We've gone out and inspected the units with code enforcement. We've inspected both some older units as well as the rehab units there. The tenant group has three primary concerns. First, maintenance of the property. The owner has agreed to do an inspection of all of the units within the next 30 days. Code enforcement has set up a schedule to go out and review the proportionate share of the units that they normally do. Some of the units are being rehabbed. They're taking out the older carpets, repainting, putting in new appliances, as well as putting in hardwood laminate floors. The owner's investing millions of dollars into the complex. He's already rehabbed the swimming pools, the playground, sidewalks. He's redoing the parking lots and making significant upgrades to the property. We did find that the work order process that they had in place was not really getting the job done. When tenants were submitting a request to have an item fixed, it wasn't necessarily documented that a request had been made, and there's no closing of the loop when the condition had been satisfied. Thanks to the Rental Housing Association, and that process is in place. And we also found that there needed to be some tenant education on how to really take care of a property. The second issue that they had were utility bills, and there was a lack of understanding as to how that all works. They use a ratio utility billing system. That means they measure all of the usage on utilities and divide that evenly amongst the units. Some of the tenants did not understand that. And there is an issue that arose that may come back to this council in that regard. Right now, when we do our low-income assistance programs, it's done to the party that owns the property. And in a large complex, that's the owner, that is not the tenant. And we need to find a way to pass those savings that we intend to help people who have income issues to be able to take advantage of our income assistance program. That goes for the smud bill, the sewer bill, the water bill, all the utility bills. So we're working with Regional Sanitation, and we'll be working with our utility department to see if we can come up with a way for those people to enjoy the savings that we intend to give them. And that will reduce the amount of out-of-pocket money people will have to spend. The rent increase, there is a rent increase, no doubt about that, and it's 100, from $100 to $200. The increase brings those units into line with the rest of Mack Road and many of the other housing complexes in our district. The owner has agreed not to seek a rent increase for any unit that has a code violation. He's going to stay those increases until all the code violations are corrected. The owner has also agreed to move anyone who wants to to a lower-priced property. He owns not only Cedar Ridge, he owns Stone Gate, he owns several other complexes. And anyone who wants to move, he will move them, plus he will transfer people to the rehab units if they want to go into the rehab units. We're planning a community meeting for July to make sure the people in the complex really understand all that's going on there. We'll have all the parties there, as well as representatives from our utilities, so we can get people signed up for the program. So I know questions have come up about that, and that's where we are.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr, for a very thorough-- There are report, more to discuss. And certainly, we are having the housing workshop, and the affordable housing workshop is well planned for the 27th of June. All right, let's go to the consent calendar. Are there any questions from members on the consent calendar? We know we have some public testimony on several items.
I have a comment on number seven.
Why don't we do that? Councilmember Harris, sure. Item 17 is the utility bill print, insert, mail, electronic presentment, and payment services.
Exactly. So my comment is this, and it's really directed towards the city manager. As I go through the consent calendar, week after week, I see an awful lot of contracts that are led to companies that are not based in Sacramento. And my question is this, on this particular one. I know we had a local firm that was deemed non-responsive. And I would come up against that not infrequently. I'm wondering if our economic development department could not do something like an employer fair to perhaps better ready our local businesses to fare better in the bidding process for fairly substantial city contracts. In this case, it's $5,200,000 over four years. You know, that's a significant amount of employment that we lose by letting contracts out of city. So that's my question to you, if it can be done legally and non-interfered with the bid process, and if it's a proper use of the economic development department to see if we can keep some of this business local.
Sure, absolutely. We spoke a little bit earlier before the meeting, and we in fact do have these employment fairs and what we call procurement fairs that the economic development puts together, and we have procurement staff in attendance, and we, I don't know exactly how many we attend a year, but it is with the intent to help people learn how to do business with the city. In this case, I understand there was an issue with being responsive because of not fully understanding or appreciating what it took to put a bid package together, but it's something I've been talking with staff since our discussion to see what we can do to redouble our efforts.
I appreciate that. You know, it's, I know that there have been those kind of procurement fairs. I'm wondering if the economic development department keeps a list of our local business enterprises, you know, to know what kind of talent we have locally. Perhaps, you know, to just make sure that those businesses are aware, rather than just doing a fair, perhaps we could target them if we know that a contract that's really in their wheelhouse is coming up.
Well, we do. We have a system we call Planet Bids, where we register, you know, businesses both local and outside of the city, and we notify them based on their interest in types of contracts here at the city. But, no, I get your point. We should push out proactively information about how they can better do business with the city.
Okay, thanks very much.
Very good. It's a very important suggestion here. Local, local hire, local business. Okay, let's go through the public testimony, unless you have any--
No, I have items 1 through 20 on the consent calendar. I have no corrections or additions to read, and we do have about four or five people that have signed up to speak. Perhaps I could also, at this time, announce that for those that may be here for another item, the public hearing on item number 23 on central midtown restaurant business is going to continue to June 13 and will not be heard this evening. And the discussion calendar item 26 is the funding agreement with Advance Peace will be withdrawn and will come back at a later date. So with that, we'll start with the public comment then on consent calendar. We have Michael Voy that is signed up for item number five, Macworthy and Eric Frame for item number 11. And Eric, you're also signed up for item 13, but you get one two-minute time slot for consent calendar.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening, sir.
Councilmembers. I'm Michael Voy in 600 I Street. And I'm not going to take the whole two minutes, I don't think. It usually happens, but I don't plan to. Item five is the Seed Corporation. And I went to the website, and I went to the electronic backup of the analysis behind that, where for the budget, there'll be, you know, all the budget documents. And when I read through this Seed Corporation, apparently it has something to do with economic development. But I couldn't figure out, it seems to me like it's kind of a dormant corporation, or something hasn't happened here. And I've been coming to the meetings for quite a while and haven't heard anything about this. And I know the dollar amount is pretty small, $100,000 out of the city budget is not a big item, but I was just wondering if somebody could, if there could be some comments from the council about what is planned with this corporation and why it's lying dormant, and the city does some things and gets reimbursed for it, and it's kind of murky.
Fair point. Is there anybody from staff who can? Thank you. Thank you. To answer the gentleman's question here.
Mayor and members of the city council, Seed Corporation is a corporation that was formed by the economic development department in around 2006 due to the recession and other factors that the corporation wasn't fully activated. More recently, the corporation has been activated with focus in the North Sacramento and Del Paso Heights area. They have a very substantial board that has been convened and is meeting. This report authorizes this corporation, since they do not have staff, to contract back with the city for city services to help staff the organization and further establish its future projects and corporate fundraising objectives. So it's really, you know, it's the most cost-effective way for Seed to get their operations going is contracting back to the city. And the funds they're using are funds that were previously granted by the city to Seed in prior actions.
Is there an action plan in terms of what Seed is?
There is, and they have active work going on now in terms of job fairs and the like in Del Paso Heights, and most recently, hacker fairs and that sort of thing. So it is, it's fledgling, it's trying to get some feet, get its feet squarely established and move forward with projects in distressed and low-income, underemployed areas.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good.
Okay, so then the next speaker on consent calendar is Macworthy for item number 11.
You know, I'm having fun, people, because people lie, 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 lie. Anyway, this should be taken back and looked at, non-professional service. That's a gimmick. That's a friendship dealing. Now, what it about, because see, people come to me a few years ago, undesirable people to clean those lots up. That should go under weed rebate. The same thing, that's the same thing under weed rebate. But see, that's what I say. You got inside deals here that reading the city can't grow. Put that under weed rebate and contract it the same way, because there's somebody that knows somebody in that area going to tip them off on this, because that don't even pay. Nonprofit, somebody got to be insured. Where is the liability of the person going to clean those weeds? It got to have a liability somewhere there, and the money you got here will not cover the liability of insurance for the person to help clean the lot. So put that under weed rebate. Be business-wise, people. You can put this thing under, you tell kids, "We're going to pick up weeds, pick up trash." That's part of this, the city owning, and give them a stipend for going out there. Because, you know, instead of playing a game with the people, instead of having, "We're going to look at a movie, let's go down and clean the weeds off, and we'll give you hamburgers this weekend, we'll give you steaks once we clean others off." Do something to help people, instead of lying to them folks.
Eric.
All right, two minutes, two items. Seems fair. We have a problem with too many vacant lots in the city. That's a quote from Mr. Steinberg a few weeks ago. We also seem to have a problem finding a site for Mr. Warren's tent city. I feel like they kind of coincide. Let's just pick one of the vacant lots and use that as a site. Thank you. The grant bid, that sounds great, but I want to make sure everyone else knows that you told us that there was a $20 million surplus in the city, and you went on to say that you had $8 million of that surplus they have no idea what to do with. So I would recommend investing in the citizens and helping them out to improve the economy, like I mentioned earlier. Moving on to number thirteen, parking. Our parking fees are going directly to the arena, I hear, an arena that the people did not want. There's going to be a vote against the arena from the people, but that vote was shut down, I heard from Mayor Steinberg himself. But overall, we didn't want it. You want to know why we didn't want it? It's because there's a little history. In 2001, the Sacramento Kings were in the playoffs, they're in the semifinals. And then the NBA rigged the semifinals against us and had the L.A. Lakers win, because, oh, they're a bigger market, of course, so they had to be in the finals. So the NBA rigged said semifinals in 2001, and then they had the gall to go on and go to the city of the leaders of Sacramento and demand that we, the people, pay for an arena, and then after, and pay for the arena. Even though they rigged the playoffs, if we had some leaders with some courage for real justice there, we would have had the NBA pay for the arena, you know? The NBA had the gall to come out and say, you have your people pay for this arena, or we take the team away.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Does it make sense, though, guys? Do you hear the reason?
Thank you.
I did overlook one.
Next.
We have Pastor Gainsborough.
Legalized parking also.
Yeah, Pastor Gainsborough.
Okay, this is our last one, item eighteen.
It is wonderful to hear about the whole person care, funding upstream coming at us. That's wonderful. That was great. The county should have applied for that, too. The county is spending several million dollars on a triage center, which is wonderful to hear that Julie Fields says it's not just going to be a building without windows, but it's going to show some love and care. And I'm very blessed by a lot of the progress that is being targeted. I would really like to see a Super Bowl city council. We have a Super Bowl winner in Rick Jennings. And to stand up with Councilman Warren for the, now...
Which item were you speaking to, Pastor?
Item eighteen. It took me a while to get to it about artwork. Ephesians, the letter to the Ephesians by Paul, he says in chapter two, verse ten, he says, "You are God's artwork." Every one of you are God's artwork. Everyone in this chamber is God's artwork. Cain was God's artwork, and yet somehow he killed his brother. He said, God said, "Where's your brother?" Cain said, "What? What?" Genesis four, verse nine. "Why are you talking to me, God? Am I my brother's keeper?" Now, every human being is artwork, and I don't oppose the several over a hundred thousand dollar items. But we certainly need, with paying the city manager, the prior city manager was getting $220,000, to object to Alan Warren, who's funding some of this with his own dollars, to not stand up next to him and be a Super Bowl champion counsel. The whole city is waiting for you to stand up with solutions to the homeless and public defecation. Let's solve the problem. Let's stand up with Councilman Warren. Mayor Steinberg, I'm proud of you saying what's coming in the pipeline, but let's solve this problem together. Stand up for the poor.
Okay, that's, that is the testimony on the consent calendar. There are no changes otherwise. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. The motion passes on a vote of eight to nothing. All right, we now move to the public hearing items, and we will begin with items twenty-one and twenty-two, which will be taken together, although they have to be voted on separately. So who is presenting on these items?
Sherri Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'm Sherri Smith with your finance department. The items before you this evening are the annual public hearings for the Power and Maintenance District, which provides funding for the maintenance of frontage improvements along Power and Road between Fourteenth Avenue and the regional transit overcrossing just south of Folsom Boulevard. And the Village Garden Landscape Maintenance District, which provides funding for maintenance and repair of masonry walls, landscaping, and irrigation systems for the areas within the North Point and Norwood subdivisions. For the Power and Maintenance District, the proposed fiscal year seventeen eighteen assessment of $2.54 per linear foot of frontage is equal to this current year. For the Village Garden Maintenance District, the proposed fiscal year seventeen eighteen annual assessment of $113.50 per residential unit per year represents a 4.5% decrease from the current year. Staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing and, upon conclusion, adopt the resolutions in each patchit that will confirm the assessment diagram and levy the assessment for fiscal year 2017-18 for the Power and Road and the Village Garden Maintenance Districts. I'm able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Want to take public comment first?
Is there a public comment?
Yes, sir. Oh, we have none? Okay, so I have none. So Councilmember Guetta.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. I'll move to close the hearing and move the item.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any further comment from the council? And any other questions?
We need a second vote on the second item.
Need a second vote?
Because there's two items.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move the second item.
We got to vote on the first one first.
No, we have not.
You have a motion and a second.
All in favor on item number twenty-one?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Okay, now, I will make the motion on item number twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there a public comment on item twenty-two? Hearing none, seeing none. Is there comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I think you need to move the, close the public hearing on that as well.
I will close the public hearing to clarify my motion and move the item.
Second.
Seconded again. Comments from council members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The item has now passed unanimously. Very good. Next item, please.
So we're now to, we are now to our discussion calendar, item number twenty-four. It's the Public Private Partnership Agreement for the Development of Smart Cities Initiatives.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, Madam Clerk. My name is Maria McGonigal, and I'm your chief information officer, and it's a pleasure to be able to come before you here tonight to present what I believe is an unprecedented relationship and partnership between the city and Verizon, one that I hope will serve to be a model for many partnerships between the city and others to come. This was a great effort, I believe, by many. And before I dive into the details and go over the terms of this contract, I want to thank a few key individuals who worked really hard in putting this partnership together. First, the mayor and his team have been instrumental in working with us. Darren, an oft unsung hero from my team. Matt Ruiac, Jerry Hicks from the attorney's office. Hector, Ryan DeVore, and Chris Connellin, your very talented directors. And from the Verizon team, Lonnie Revert, Scott, and many others. And they'll have a moment to talk after I get done with the presentation. So thanks again for your leadership, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I do believe that we are making history tonight. This is a non-exclusive public-private partnership between the city and Verizon. The agreement does not restrict the city in any way from entering into future agreements with Verizon or any other partners. The demand and need for high-speed data connectivity from residents, businesses, and visitors is on the rise with no end in sight, and traditional approaches to increase capacity are no longer adequate to meet the needs of our community. The City of Sacramento recognizes the importance of public and private partnerships to achieve our common goals, and partnerships with companies such as this with Verizon present a unique opportunity for the city and Verizon to improve the quality of life for all residents, to reduce costs, improve access, deliver services to our community in smarter and effective ways. Verizon will invest more than $100 million in the city, and the city will lean forward as a partner to reduce barriers and streamline a path forward for our future. Let me walk you through some of the key deal points. First, I'm going to go over what the city gets and what the city gives, and it's kind of a big deal, so, I think. So I think it'll take me just a little bit shy of ten minutes to get through the whole deal. Hopefully, I can speed that up. So as you know, a city is a diverse and vibrant city, and as personally a youth who grew up in an underserved community and with, in a family that had few resources, I know that exposure to opportunity is everything and can fundamentally change young people's lives. Our youth are one of our most treasured assets, and as such, and as such, we need to invest in them, in their education, and provide real and tangible pathways for them to get employed in meaningful work. This partnership will provide STEM programming and up to 100 jobs for our youth over five years. High school internships will be 10 weeks during the summer. Students will be eligible to continue their internships with Verizon for more than two years while attending community college and ultimately be eligible for Sacramento-based Verizon jobs. And I think that that's pretty cool. Wouldn't it be great if access to Digital Universe was available to all? Well, this agreement doesn't quite get us all the way there, but it does give us one major step forward. In this proposed partnership, Verizon will manage and provide municipal Wi-Fi services throughout a combination of digital kiosks as well as standalone Wi-Fi coverage. The standalone Wi-Fi coverage will include 27 parks to be determined, working with council staff and the community and Verizon. Verizon will also provide secure services to approximately 10 megabits throughput in those parks. This service will be provided free of charge for five years. In addition, 15 kiosks will be, will provide gigabit Wi-Fi coverage to residents and visitors within close proximity to the kiosk. Citizen engagement and connectivity with our community are the cornerstones of being a great city. And we will develop 15 kiosks that offer citizen engagement, public service announcement, education, messaging, Wi-Fi, and advertising for five years. At two years, the city can consider switching to a 10-year lease option with revenue sharing or continue the five-year option without revenue sharing. Verizon will leverage the advertising revenue to pay for the kiosks as well as provide Wi-Fi services. The revenue generation in kiosks in high-traffic areas will also be used to cover costs where Wi-Fi is required for community needs, including closing the digital divide, but may not have the same, in areas that may not have the same revenue generation capabilities. Verizon will work with the city and its local partners to curate content that drives citizen engagement and promotes community services and events with an individual neighborhood We have a growing tech-savvy and civic-oriented community, and as part of this agreement, we'll work with, together, to promote economic development and innovation on smart cities' technologies and leveraging the city's open data, smart city sensor data, and connectivity infrastructure. Verizon will provide the City of Sacramento with Verizon Internet of Things platform, and will work with the city to engage key partners such as local universities, community, and high-tech entrepreneur groups to develop applications and solutions on that platform to address urban challenges, such as analytics related to data collected from the intelligent traffic solutions. Verizon will also lead, lend its expertise to the use of the Verizon Internet of Things development platform for the city, and even now, as we speak in another room in this building, the hacker community is busy at work on our open data portal. Next is, the next component of this proposed partnership, we will also be aligning with the city's Vision Zero program by implementing intelligent traffic solution at 15 key intersections. Verizon will gather data analytics at these intersections and corridors, and will use that data to guide implementation of solutions that have positive impact on motorists, cyclists, pedestrian safety, and in keeping with the Vision Zero program. All the data collected for this task shall be provided with the city in an open data We will also develop and deploy an internet, an intelligent traffic capabilities to address specific congestion at 12 intersections, and will provide traffic flow solutions for approximately 50 miles. Verizon will, in addition, implement a video-based public safety and security solution with analytic capabilities at 10 of the 15 city intersections where Verizon, where Vision Zero is being implemented. Verizon and the city will continue to work together to utilize the solution to enhance the city's public safety system and offer greater visibility and promote a safer environment. The, all the data, again, collected for this task will be provided in this open data format and shared as appropriate. Verizon is making a significant investment in Sacramento by deploying hundreds of miles of fiber throughout the city. In addition, Verizon will provide cost-effective connectivity services to encourage economic development and innovation, acceleration at locations in the city. Verizon will stage fiber for the city to use for city purposes. For example, this will enable us to enable the remaining non-fiber connected traffic signals that are near Verizon fiber paths, approximately 280 signalized intersections, to be connected to the city's traffic operations centers to manage the flow of traffic throughout the city. This connected fiber backbone will form the foundation of everything that we, as the city, want to do for the future of mobility in our city, and this is a big win for the So, those are an awful lot of gets, and as they say, you don't get something for nothing. So here's what the city's going to provide. City will provide Verizon with the opportunity to use city conduit where available for 20-year term. The city will waive attachment rates for city, to city light poles for 101 small cells on city-owned assets for a 10-year term. The city also agrees to provide Verizon with an annual, annual attach rate for all 5G small cells on a cost-based attachment rate based on the California Public Utilities Commission formula, as long as Verizon commences the deployment of 5G small cells within 18 months of the commercial availability of the technology. Verizon will also pay an administrative charge of $200 for each 5G small cell. City will ensure streamlined permit approvals on single-asset designs for city-owned streetlights and for wireline infrastructure development. Getting near the end here. This proposed initiative represents what I believe to be an unprecedented public-private partnership that is strategic and in alignment with the city's goals. It is not exclusive and allows everyone to participate. This partnership really is a game changer for the City of Sacramento and the region. As the first PPP of its, or public-private partnership of its kind in the nation, Sacramento and Verizon are shaping the future of how to maximize efficiencies and scale to provide a greater level of community services and digital equity. The city is focused on solving real-world problems that will improve the quality of life for our residents, businesses, and visitors. We are actively advancing technology development in Sacramento that benefits the community by enabling cost-effective deployment of these smart city solutions, networks, and ensuring digital equity. And as we are positioning the city to be an early adopter of advanced technology networks such as 5G and autonomous vehicle infrastructure. So this partnership is innovative and aggressive, and I believe that it puts Sacramento way out ahead of the rest. And with that, that's the end of my formal presentation. And with that, that's the end of my formal presentation.
Thank you, Maria. I know we're going to want to hear from some of the Verizon representatives. I know I want to make some opening comments to sort of frame this. Do we want to hear from Verizon? Well, why don't I make my comments, and then, as part of the public testimony, we'll have our, our partners come up as well. First of all, I want to thank you for doing an outstanding job and leading this effort. I had the chance to thank you publicly at the press event, but I want to do so again. I also want to thank Ash Raghani from my team and Crystal Strait, who, as you know, is, is leaving City Hall this week to take a job, leading the statewide and probably national effort for Planned Parenthood, and we're going to miss her greatly. But this is a big night, because it does represent a new day and a new way. You see, traditionally, the way government operates, and it's okay, in fact, it was fine for the times, I suppose, is that for something like this, what we would do is we'd put out a request for proposal, or a request for information, and sometimes it's appropriate, by the way, to do just that. But in this instance, we decided, and I know from day one as mayor, what I've wanted to encourage the staff through the city manager, but directly to the staff, is to be willing to take reasonable risks if those risks are consistent with serving the public interest. And what is the public interest here? The public interest is changing the fundamental nature of our economy in Sacramento. We are a proud capital city. We've long been a proud center of public service, and we're going to continue to be. But it is no longer enough, it's no longer enough if we want to build a tax base, if we want to satisfy the, the hunger that the people of this city have for more, for a more cosmopolitan city, for a, for, for a destination city, for a city that has the economic capacity to build more housing for people of all income levels and to create more jobs. And so we can't continue to do things just the old way and expect that all of a sudden we're going to transform. And by the way, none of this happens overnight. But this is a very different approach. Instead of the RFP, what we've said to not just Verizon, but to any technology company, any telecommunications company, we are open for business, and we are open for you to come, offer, to, to come partner with us so that you can spread your innovation in technology and so that we can be a city that is on the forefront of new technology and new innovation. And I want to thank Verizon for being first, for having lunch and, and, and taking me up on my invitation to enter into this discussion and this negotiation. And I think this is more than a fair agreement. Certainly Verizon gets about $200,000 a year worth of permit, worth of permit waivers, permit fee waivers, I think it's that, and maybe a little bit more depending upon the 5G evolution. The city gets tens of millions of dollars of infrastructure investment, including, by the way, Verizon's investment in improving city functionality, because part of the fiber you are building for us will be exclusive to and for the city, in addition to the 27 parks and, and the internships and, and the jobs. And so we thank you, and we're very excited about this. But I want to clarify another important part of the message, and Maria said this. This is not an exclusive agreement. We couldn't do that. That would be a mistake and violative of, of public process. We are granting you access to 103 poles, and there are close to, what, 30,000 poles in the city? To any other company that wants to talk to us about similar partnerships, we are not only willing, we are desirous of having you in our city. There's one piece of this, though, that I do think we could perfect, if you will, regardless of a more comprehensive agreement with any other company. While we are, again, giving to get here in order to finalize this, I think, excellent agreement with Verizon, one of the aspects of the agreement requires us, if you will, to fast-track the placement of the small cells for the 103 poles, and I think that's right. I'd like to see us grant the same permit streamlining benefit for any other company that wants to, that wants to do small cell technology in the City of Sacramento. And I would ask you, Maria, if you would, and, and the city manager, to come back, if you could, in a few weeks with what appropriate fees might be necessary, not for Verizon, because that's already contained within the four corners of the agreement, but what fees might be required for, to enable us to offer the same timing on permitting for the small cell technology for any other company. I don't think that takes away in any way from the agreement we've made with Verizon, but it makes it clear to others, we, we, we want you in our city, we want to grant you the same timing when it comes to permitting. You may need to pay for that because it's a capacity issue for our public works team and our, our, our technology team, but that, let's make this the policy of our city. Then we'll sit down with any or all of you separately to see if you're willing to invest in improving city functionality in the way that Verizon is, if you're willing to create Wi-Fi in, in multiple parks, if you're willing to invest in Thousand Strong and our other youth, our, our, our other youth programs, and we'll come back 10 times to this council with similar agreements. So, good job. This is a big day for the city, and it's a new way, a new way and a new day. Thank you. Let's hear from the good people from Verizon first, and then we'll hear, we'll take some of the public testimony. We'll take any questions from council members, and then we'll cast a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, Madam Clerk. My name is Rudy Reyes. I'm the regional head of public policy and law for Verizon in the Western U.S., and I just, and Maria and your team. I just want to say how thrilled we are to be launching this groundbreaking public-private partnership in Sacramento, and how proud we are of our city, our state, and indeed our nation for, for this outcome today. We've approached this as a true partnership, not the typical transaction, but a partnership where we both come to the city with our challenges and our collective needs and aspirations, and we find a way to solve them, to solve them together. And so, in that, in that spirit of partnership, I again want to thank Sacramento and Mayor Steinberg for really leaning in. I've been asked, why Sacramento, as we, as we look to other cities in the country, and, and I really, the, the best answer that I have is that Sacramento had the vision to really lean in, led by Mayor Steinberg, to say, how can we make this a true destination city, inspired by innovation? And so, with that spirit, thank you very much for your consideration of today's public-private partnership, and we look forward to the work ahead.
Thanks very much, Mr. Reyes. We appreciate you and your team, all the great folks out here, for your help. Why don't you introduce everybody, would you? Rudy, please.
Sure, yes. So, we have here my colleague, Jesus Roman, who is our lead counsel in the West. We have Sofia Garcia, who heads our government affairs in, in Sacramento. And we have our team at Mercury here, led by Justin Fanslaw. And we have Hubert Riley, who came over as part of the acquisition of the Sensity Smart Lighting Company, and we're just thrilled to have all of them onboard. Thank you.
And a very professional team, and, and you were up against a tenacious negotiator here, and that's, I think that's what's really important to add, that this negotiation was not an easy one. And, you know, Maria more than held her ground here to bring us, you know, $100 million worth of Verizon investment. And I'm not saying you made a bad deal, you made a great deal. We're, but we grant some fee waivers, and we grant, you know, we, we make it a little bit easier, but we're about the city, and we get a lot of public investment, and we get to not only showcase the technology, you get to be our partner, so, all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria.
Ready, good. Okay, let's, let's keep going through the public testimony. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll have Rob, I believe it's Prasky, next. And then we have, is it Jay Sales and Michelle Smira?
Hello, I'm Rob Prasky. I'm the CEO and founder of Anycom. I'm a local company here in, based in Sacramento, live nearby. We have offices in Elkro, I'm sorry, in Eldorado Hills, in Gold River, and in San Jose. So, we found out about your, your action here with Verizon Thursday. I got a, I got a notice from our, one of our, our stockholders, then I got another notice and another notice. I think I got about 20 notices. We have over a stock, 100 stockholders with, with five VCs. And, and the comments were, I think you should urge caution before signing a contract, something that's announced on a Thursday, and here we are a few days later on a Tuesday. So, what we were hoping was that we would have an opportunity to present an alternative or to take a look at, well, we think there's actually about $27 million that the city is leaving on the table here by executing this contract. Well, if I was going to advise you, I'd be asking those questions. What do you mean? Where do you see that? So, you know, we had just a couple of days to go through 103 pages. So, I don't only represent my company, but I also have folks from Siemens here in the audience, those are our strategic partners, and other technology companies. So, my only, my only counsel here was, you know, take a look at it before you, before you make a, make a decision, see if it's the right thing to do. And so, that's the only comment that I have here. That's it.
You going to make a proposal to the city?
If it makes sense, you know, I think you should take a look at it. So, is it, is it a conflict, or is it complementary, or is it an alternative that you should be considering? We'll take a look at the Anycom Siemens proposal, see if it is complementary or better than. So, we would love to.
Well, let's, let's sit down with our fine staff and just work through it, and if it makes sense, be great. But I don't see, you know, the problem, again, I, I, I think there ought to be some acknowledgement here, that what we're doing here with Verizon is a non-exclusive agreement. It's a non-exclusive agreement. I don't know, 103 poles, out of how many, Maria? Approximately 30,000? Okay, well, I don't know. That, that, that leaves a lot of capacity here, a lot of parks, a lot of, there's, it's a big city here. This is a pilot, it's a bold pilot, and it's a new, it is a new frame, but we are interested in talking with you and with others about adding more technological capacity to our city.
And we're, we're glad to respond to that. But my only comment was just take a look and see if there's an alternative proposal here before you decide on the dollars and cents of it. We had heard, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years, and we didn't have much time to respond here, so that's the only comment that I'm making here.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Prasky.
Evening. Many of you know me, I'm Jay Sales. I, I run the shop for VSP Global, but that's actually not the capacity I'm hearing today today. I want to make, I just thought I'd make this part of the record. For the first time, I'm talking in front of this council as a, as an actual person who's living downtown now. I'm a resident, and that's important to me. But beyond that, I want to talk on really quick just why I support this, because I do support this wholeheartedly. This should have been done four years ago. I'm not berating anybody as to why or when, it just should have been done four years ago, at least. To go into other cities and to be from Sacramento and to talk about Sacramento as a Goldilocks, I refer to Sacramento often as a Goldilocks city because you can test any part of the country here, you can test an urban setting here, you can test a Midwestern setting, you can test Pacific Northwest, you can test anything within 30 minutes of this city for any corporation for product, technology, or otherwise. It is a Goldilocks city for corporations to test risk ideas. You have to have the infrastructure to support those, those risks and those companies to come in and try different things. We have to catch up with the likes of cities like Dublin, Ireland, who've had this for years, cities like Chattanooga, Tennessee, Chattanooga, Tennessee, who have had this for years, Kansas City. List goes on and on, and globally, it goes on and on much, much longer. It's time to become a global city, not just a leading American city. This will help us with that. By the way, last point, cities that have broadband access to their children, 7% to 10% more, higher graduation rates. End of story. That's enough of an argument for me. Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot, Jay.
Evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michelle Smira here tonight on behalf of the R Street Sacramento Partnership, or the R Street P-Bid. Here very much in support of what you're doing. We're really excited to see this technology come to R Street and the rest of the city. And we'd love to be a, a test area or pilot area to bring some of that in. We did have two questions, or maybe comments, one of which was on the kiosks that we noticed. There were a couple in the R Street corridor. We just hope we can be part of those discussions about maybe where they'd be placed and kind of the look and feel of them. And the second is that there's a current application for a standalone monopole within our district on 10th, and we're hoping perhaps the small cell technology would negate the need to take some of that valuable land for the monopole if we can put the small cell up there. So we'd love to work with staff on that and look forward to it coming. Thanks.
Good. Thank you very much.
McWorthy is next, and then Victor Brazelton.
I'm going to put this in the same way I did about the arena. I'm not opposing the arena, and I'm not for the arena. So I'm neutral. Now, when we look at the presentation here, something hits me. We, a young man from Verizon was the CEO of the NAACP once upon a time, and I had a lot of what he said, and I knew we weren't going to stay around long. But we, we look at some things, like I tried to show you, understand what you see and analyze what you hear. Now, we want to understand what I see, and I ain't got time to analyze what I hear. But now, her brochure showed black folks. Where are my people represented here? Ain't nobody's CEO, black folks here. Now, that's just like cable. I have people call me by cable. Cable call me in the same way this come in after somebody else is in. And where did the black folks go in the afternoon? Heard from work, to watch a movie. It's not this case. Why wouldn't we have this, have some black kids, people speak to us, a long boy walking around? They don't need that, we got enough of that. We want some intelligence to pull your britches up on your behind and act like you want to be a man. But we don't get that. Give them some more technology, what are you going to do with it? Intelligence and traffic don't go together, safety don't go together. Intelligence means that when that cell go off, somebody listen, and when you get busted for the drugs that going to be here, they're going to go to their cell, and you and your friends going to jail. That's what intelligence mean. That has nothing to do with traffic. You going to be so high, you won't even see a traffic sign when the city become a drug dealer. This is what we want to talk about. But anyway, do what you want to do. But anyway, do what you want to do, and I won't be here and continue to laugh at you because you ain't got nothing to put high technology in here to help my folks unless you put them on some jobs.
Okay, Victor.
I think the thing that stood out inside of this proposal is what the city would get. And especially for how it spoke to the digital divide. And to me, as a company as large as Verizon, I think more than 100 positions or internships should certainly be available for anybody who is able or willing to be able to move into that market of technology. And seeing that the field of technology is going to be one of the most dominating fields for young people to get into, I think having more than 100 positions would be the first thing that I would ask the council to say, is that that partnership should certainly leverage more than 100 positions looking at the digital divide. Second thing is when we looked at the digital divide, it wasn't really a specific plan as to what Verizon was gonna do to help bridge that gap between the digital divide of the folks who are, don't have access to the cellular technologies that's there. So, I'd like to see more of an idea of what filled out point of what that bridge or gap between the digital divide would be. And also, I hope when you look at the aspect of whether or not it's gonna be a revenue share or not, whether or not this actual proposal is limited. Just last week, we talked about the idea of how much money it would cost for branding just to be in the naming rights of a building. These kiosks that are there are gonna be branded. It'll be with Verizon to start off with. So, I just want to make sure that what we're branding our city with, that we're also having the digital divide, and the people are getting both the ability to use the technology that are coming there, and the ability to be able to go to that infrastructure and be able to learn about it, and be able to come out of that infrastructure with the possibility of getting a job with a company like Verizon. So, that's what I would ask the city to look for. Thank you.
Okay, that is the public testimony. Thank you very much. Are there council comments, council comments on the item? If not, is there a motion on the item? Well, we do have a couple members. Good. Councilmember Shanir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say a couple words really quickly. I think that this is a large step forward for us as a city, and really brings together a lot of the aspects and things that we've been talking about for a while. It also, I think, is very important to our neighborhoods. And just to kind of relive a couple of points that the Verizon folks talked about and Maria talked about, I think bringing Wi-Fi to 27 parks, and as we, if we are smart about where we put those. Mr. Brazelton was talking about the digital divide, bringing Wi-Fi to 27 parks in at-risk neighborhoods where people might not have Wi-Fi is a major aspect of bridging that divide and providing that access. I think the internships, as a start, 100 internships is great. It's a significant, significant thing that they're doing, that they're saying we are gonna be part of the city, and we're gonna be part of the future of the city because those 100 young people, as they go through this, hopefully will be in the technology business and will stay and become, you know, our own leaders in the next generation here. So, I think that's a great thing that they're doing. This is pretty low risk, I think, for the city because it's non-exclusive. And I've had, we've gotten emails from a couple of companies, and the mayor and I actually had some meetings with one other larger technology company. And I fully expect that we'll be in discussions with all of them about making this partnership, or multiple partnerships, to the benefit of the city. So, Maria, I think you've done a great job here. I just want to say thank you to you and your team, and look forward to really deepening the partnership with Verizon as we move forward. I'm sure we'll have lots of conversations. As this technology evolves incredibly quickly, I hope that we can keep up now, and we have, we don't have to be behind the curve, but with this partnership, we can be ahead of the curve as we move forward. Thanks very much.
Thanks very much.
And I'm happy to move the item.
Yeah, I just also would acknowledge Barry Broome, the head of GSAC, who's here in the audience, bringing a lot of similar energy to not only our city, but our region.
You know, having Barry in the room and not hearing from Barry is such a unique experience. I don't know what we're gonna do about that, but...
Motto is, motto is, we want more.
Again, I want to move the item.
Good, very, very good move by Councilmember Shanir. Thank you, Barry. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say to you, Mr. Mayor, and the staff, and the people at Verizon, I think this is a very bold move by the city. I think it's positive. I think it is the types of energy and innovation that, you know, we'd like to see more of. And I know we had, we had gotten a number of emails and calls in relationship to this opportunity, but I believe we have to be about taking calculated risks, and I believe that the downside is greatly, or the upside is much more substantial than any negative downside to this proposal. And so, I am happy to second the Councilman Shanir's motion. I think this is the kind of thing we'd like to see more of in other technology companies that have ideas and how to collaborate with the city. I think what you're hearing from us is that they're welcome. And I think also what you're hearing that, and at least from this particular item, the mayor is a pretty good negotiator and his staff and the city, so I want to give you credit for that. I think it's a substantial investment to Verizon, so thank you as well. Look forward to working with you in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. So, improving infrastructure in the city, digital infrastructure in the city has been a big deal for a while, and something we have all wanted to do, fiber, or, you know, 5G, or whatever. All of those things are important. I have one question for you, Maria. On a, it's wonderful that Verizon came forward, and I'm sure will be a terrific partner, but we do have other partners in the city that we've worked with in the past on a variety of things that are service providers. We have some really good ones who've helped us with a lot of youth programs, and, you know, millions of dollars' worth of other community gives over the years. And I just want to make sure that the permitting process will still be equal, that there will still be equal footing for other partners that the city has that do similar types of work. Is that still the case?
Yeah, absolutely. We're, as directed by the mayor, we're gonna come back to you in a couple of weeks with exactly how that will look, but we'll definitely, we can get that to you, and we're committed to doing that.
Okay, so we're gonna just take this action tonight, but when we come back, when you come back, you will bring us a process that clearly shows a non-favoritism in a permitting process, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
In terms of timing, in terms of timing, that's been the big concern described by some of the other telecom and technology companies.
Yeah, and I just, my vote tonight will be contingent upon that happening following up. So, I don't, it feels a little reverse out of order sometimes. I like to have that all packaged up, but I obviously want to support this. This is great technology. It's important for the city. I just want to make sure that we're, we are still the city, and that we're able to, while PPP is really great, I want to make sure we don't alienate other partners that we have out there that have been good partners to us and will continue to be in the years to come. And I also just want to reiterate that it's a non-exclusive deal, non-exclusive contract. So, to the folks that came tonight, or folks who have reached out to us in the last couple of days, I'm sure some of you have received messages too, that we're open for business, and, you know, Verizon's through the door first, but the door's still open for folks that want to come and do projects with the city of Sacramento. And then, I think, you know, the credit here goes to you, Maria. You're a star in the IT department. We knew you were. You've been a standout for a few years, and definitely have done a great job leading the tech world here, and lending credibility to the city's ability to be a partner in a pretty tough industry that moves really fast. It's hard for government to be a good partner to the tech world because if you know Jay Sales, for example, there are no, you know, they're way outside of the boundaries. There's no boundaries, right? They are creative and innovative, and they go every day, and sometimes it's hard for government to be that creative and that innovative because we have such a mandate. But you've done a really good job of negotiating that, and giving the city what we really needed to be able to put out there to the, you know, hacker labs and VSPs of the world to say, we can be, we can be a good partner, just because we're a city, don't count us out. And I think that you have done a really good job of that, and it's perfect, brilliant, that you are the person in that seat for the city of Sacramento, the capital of California, where we might actually be able to put out some examples for the rest of the state to follow on how you can successfully do these PPPs, because it is fear that holds government back from moving in this direction. And so, I don't, you know, I want to be cautious and careful, but I don't want to be slow, and I don't want to miss the opportunity. So, thanks for being in the seat at the right moment in time and lending us your credibility and intelligence. I think that is critical to why we're able to move this forward today. And thank you, Verizon, for entering in with us, and to the other groups that are watching that have been good partners over the years. We're happy to be partners with them too, moving forward. They just need to get your phone number, call you, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say that Sacramento is a really unique and interesting market, and I think that Verizon noticed that and felt that it was worthwhile to come bring us a proposal, and I thank you for that. And I wish you success in this market. I think that you'll find things will work well. I'd also like to thank Maria because she took that proposal and worked it over pretty hard, and, you know, brought a lot of things to the city that are gonna be very advantageous for us. So, a great job there. My other comment is to Siemens, Anycom. I've been intrigued by your product for two years, and I think it has potential, and this deal does not in any way preclude you from entering the market. I would say bring a proposal, just be aware that you'll be dealing with Maria. So, be forewarned. But if it's a good proposal, and again, I believe your product has great potential, if it's a good proposal and it's something that we can work with, there's certainly business to be struck. So, I wish you luck as well. Thank you, Verizon.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, again, Maria, not enough accolades. Thank you for being courageous and setting an example for the rest of our city staff about taking risks, being creative, and everyone involved in it that put this together. Couple of things. One, want to, again, thank you for the clarification on that this is not an exclusive, but a contract that allows for competition, and really pushes people and other, our other partners to meet the challenge, to step up to the challenge. Huge positive benefits here, can't reiterate the impacts for youth, the STEM program. I know how much it impacted our family to look at the STEM fields, to be able to advance and move out. And I think that the more that these partners work with our programs and with our rec programs to help support our after-use, youth programs that are focused around STEM, I think that'll be critical. We have to move beyond, I think, just the old-fashioned recreation, but looking at career pathways as a way, particularly with the conversation about digital divide. I think the piece that I find very interesting here is the fiber infrastructure and the linkage to economic development. And I hope that not only Verizon, but other competitors that come to the table start looking at fiber infrastructure and our commercial corridors that, like, you know, Stockton Boulevard, Florin Road, Del Paso Heights, all these areas that I think, you know, need a new vision of economic development, and start thinking, how can we use this huge investment to make those places attractive for things that are different other than retail, which we know have challenges that are going away? So, I think this puts us in an opportunity to really look at that now, early on, because this infrastructure investment will be a multi-decade investment that we'll put forward together. Kudos again. I'm excited to look at the next phase of planning that goes into this. And finally, you know, this concept of autonomous vehicles and autonomous transportation, autonomous transit, I think Reno, Nevada has already taken that leap forward on looking at autonomous transit. But if that's ever gonna come to fruition, it's the combination of, you know, the 5G, the Wi-Fi, the fiber connection, and all of the things that are connected in that type of system, signalization, that's what's gonna make, I think, our city become that next futuristic city for the benefit of our own constituents. Thank you, Maria, and thanks, everyone.
Very good. Thank you very much, Eric. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not gonna reiterate all the benefits. I think you framed this very well. And I just want to make two points. One, we need to look at the day when we don't need to expedite our permitting process, when it's already fast for everyone, not just in these partnerships. So, I think we need to invest in how we do this process to make it really efficient. And the second point, we've been focusing on wireless and 5G. The next public-private partnership may not even be in this arena. There is a lot more to the city infrastructure than just the 30 poles that we're doing here, and the other 6,000 poles that we have. And there are opportunities, as the mayor said, the city is open for business. So, there are opportunities to partner with the city of Sacramento and any other items that we operate in, from garbage trucks to meters. There are plenty of opportunities for businesses to come forward with ideas on how to provide a benefit to the city in using our resources, and we're open for business. So, while we, this one is focused on wireless and the technology business, the next one may not be. So, even if you're not in this arena, come forward. The staff is waiting for your ideas. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Larry. I just have one more question in closing to Maria. You mentioned in your opening that this public-private partnership is the first of its kind in the country. Did I hear that right? Can you elaborate just for a moment? In what, in what way is it the first in the country?
We're not aware of any other partnerships that leverage investment in fiber optics like this does for a city, to allow the city to expand its fiber-optic reach in such a significant way. If you look at partnerships where, even like where you have a Google come into a city and build out a fiber optic network, the city doesn't actually get to retain usage of any of that fiber optic network. They negotiate how and rate to get set maybe, and what services get provided to community centers or things like that, and at what cost. But here, the city significantly positioned itself, I think, in a unique and way anywhere that I've heard of, in its ability to be able to build basic infrastructure, this is kind of like the pipes of the future, you know, the sewer and the water pipes of the future, to build basic infrastructure that can support its work for the long-term future.
Good. Thank you. I think that was important to reiterate here at the end. We, thank you again. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? The motion passes eight to nothing. The requisite two-thirds vote. The measure passes. Thank you very much, and congratulations, everybody. Excellent. We move on to the final item of the evening, which is a very important information item. Mr. Jerry Way, I'll let you start, and then I'll, again, frame this, and we'll have a discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of City Council. I'm Jerry Way with Mr. Chan's office, and I'm honored to be before you one last time. In the mid-1990s, the city established, this city established for the first time, a place-based service delivery model that truly changed the way local government and constituents collaborate. The original neighborhood services were truly geographically placed, based, problem-solving, and community centerpieces for our communities. Over the years, a collapsing economy coupled with sea change in how society communicates led to a complete overhaul of our neighborhood services, and today, the division that was once a department has terrific people that will be asked to continue to do amazing work, but with a substantial different mission and purpose in mind. Christina Pallone is here tonight, and she is, as you all know, her and her staff do incredible work.
Yep.
And they're gonna keep doing incredible work. This report is the launch for restoring neighborhood services, not the model from the 1990s, but a new and exciting version aimed at implementing a holistic, community revitalization, and neighborhood economic development action strategy. The path that we have set upon has two major parts. The first part- first part is a recommended framework for developing neighborhood-based community revitalization and economic development strategies that support decentralized local actions that are supportive of citywide goals and policies. To lead this major piece, we've brought in a consultant economist, Dr. Doreen Hackler, whom will spend the next hundred days or so working with many stakeholders, including all of you, to develop these recommendations. Part two, part two is the recommended changes to the organizational structure that will most effectively support the implementation of the neighborhood-based community revitalization and economic development strategies. We have brought Mr. Max Fernandez back as a retired annuitant to collaborate. Max, where's Max? Max Fernandez back, two years' absence, to collaborate with our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Chris Conlin, who's here tonight, also collaborating with our economic development team and our community development team, along with many of the executives and the departments in the city. Both Doreen Hackler and Max Fernandez will keep you all apprised of our effort and our progress with a council report unveiling final recommendations planned for the first week or two of September. Please join me in welcoming Max Fernandez back and Doreen Hackler aboard. Doreen couldn't be here tonight, but she is aboard. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Jerry. It's, we know this is not your last council presentation, by the way. This is, it just isn't. That's the end of the story.
I may be back.
Okay. And, and to welcome Max back, who, you know, I was so privileged to work with, along with Jerry, back in the good old 90s. Max was really the pioneer, or one of the lead pioneers of this, of this philosophy and approach. And you don't look any older, really. Twenty-some-odd years later, you look the same.
Doesn't.
But the fact that you're willing to come back and help us recapture the modern version, and I think that's important, the modern version of a very sound approach to governing, we really appreciate. You know, just very briefly on this, I hope that all the members of the City Council and the community will get engaged with Max and Doreen and, you know, Jerry when he visits City Hall to make sure that when they present in September, that it incorporates your vision and your point of view. We've talked a lot about this. I talked a lot about this, Angelique and I, on the campaign trail. And what I always said about this, my frame of reference was not, it's not that, it's not about the structure. It's a philosophy. And the philosophy is, one, that government ought to be more responsive to the neighborhoods, but that, two, government services ought to be integrated as much as possible. We shouldn't have a functional separation between police, fire, parks, recreation, community economic development. We all ought to be working together as a team with our neighborhoods, divided by geographic sectors of the city. And that's what we want to bring back, but with the modern application, because technology has changed. It's no longer neighborhood watch in the old way, right? The definition of neighborhood policing may be different. The way we think about parks and rec is obviously different with the youth, with the youth department and youth focus. But we can be more responsive. And frankly, the other thing that really I've noticed from a distance here before I got here was that I think the city has put all the onus on the council members to deliver all the festivals and the, and a lot of the quote extras for the communities in the districts. And they aren't extras. They ought to be fundamental, fundamental parts of what the city provides, but we really haven't had the structure do as much of that as we did some years ago. So this is a pretty exciting opportunity. Max, do you want to say anything?
Yes, he does.
Yes.
Yes, he does. Go ahead.
I, I just think that the city is just keeping up with what's going on. This whole thing that Maria just put forward is a tool for, that we can use to make this happen. I mean, it's just, it's kind of a carpe diem, you know? We're, we're, we're at this point of where technology and, and bringing neighborhoods together is that critical mass. So I see it as an opportunity, and I love this city, and, you know, my kids, my grandkids are all here, so, you know, what can I say? It's, this is just a great thing, and I'm looking forward to working with all of the, the council members and you, Mayor, and along with Jerry and, and Doreen and Christina, all of us. It'll, it'll be a team effort.
Will there be some opportunities to actually interact formally or informally out in the community with the neighborhood associations, the neighborhood leaders, as well as you develop this set of recommendations?
You bet, for sure.
I think it's important that there actually be a work plan that, with the council members, that gets out in the community to hear how, how and what they want.
Can do.
That's the whole idea. Okay. Thank you. Any council comments, questions? We have a couple speakers. I'm sorry. Go ahead. We've got two speakers.
Okay, Eric Frame and Macworthy.
Okay. This is Mr. Worthy. It was the last item, so I suppose it's worth the list.
Hello again. You just mentioned working together as a team. Let's do that. We, the people, are helping the homeless right now on our own. We're feeding them every Wednesday night right outside these windows. You're all invited to join us to help with providing food and volunteering to feed the homeless. It's very fun. It's right out here on Wednesday nights. And we need to work as a team, and relief would come much faster if you guys were on board. One great thing about coming to these meetings is I get to meet people that are interested, that are actually interested in helping the homeless and helping the community. I just met a good friend from the UN. He works for the UN, and he mentioned, one of his ideas is some sort of indigenous currency as another outlet to help, help the people of Sacramento. He'll come in next week and talk. He wasn't here early enough to get his public comment in. So that's what's great. We get to meet people that do want to help each other. And I do invite you to come Wednesday nights, provide food. There's a long line. As you know, there are 13,000 homeless in the Sacramento County.
Does have to do with neighborhood services.
Oh, public bathrooms would be nice as well.
Okay. You're, you're off the topic here. The topic is whether or not we should reorganize and, and build a neighborhood services department. So we appreciate your testimony. We've heard you loud and clear.
All right. In terms of neighborhood services, seems there are 13,000 homeless. I feel like they're part of the neighborhood services, so, you know, I thought I'd mention that. And the public bathroom part, because we really need public bathrooms, because, as you know, there's too much defecating. We need the, the neighborhoods to be clean. That's part of the services of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
So, please consider my invitation. Thank you.
Thank you for testifying.
Macworthy.
People, good to see you. But when we see things that happened thirty years ago, it come back. Neighborhood, isn't this where we started off when you said redevelopment? It's the same garbage. It serves the neighborhood. We, I got a ticket right over here. You didn't even sweep the street. You didn't even sweep the street and got equipment. Who do the scheduling? Who is in charge? Parks and Recreation, Doc Worship Family started Parks and Recreation in Hagerwood. I was there when that was the shriners, John Lewis and Joe Depp, the people was in there, and the lady over there. People, get something different. And we want a resolution on the neighborhood leaders. How do you choose a neighborhood leader? Who give you the references to say this is the neighborhood leader? We want some clarity on how do you, especially for black folks in Oak Park. We want to know, how did you come to that point as the neighborhood leader? It's time to wake up and be responsible instead of rubber stamping and assuming that, that a leader, that the process of a leadership in America is selective. Somebody got to choose a leader. But you just said, well, we, we talk to these people. We want to know if they are nonprofits. We want to know about their status with the IRS. We want to know their meetings, when their meeting's coming. We want to know what is their activity in the neighborhood. This is what we want. This makes the neighborhood, people. That's just what we need, especially for black folks. We need, we don't need things come just like we see the presentation here. For sure it's black folks, but no black folks got a job. People, wake up to what's going on. Diversity is a process of discrimination.
Thank you. That concludes the formal agenda this evening. Are there council ideas and questions? Yes, there are. We'll begin with Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. This Friday, we are showing Moana for our movie night in the park at the North Natomas Regional Park. Some of you have been out to the movie nights in District One. You are all welcome to join if you'd like. And we'll have the farmer's market again on Saturday from eight to noon, and yoga in the park at nine AM this Saturday. And if, if any of you are thinking about doing yoga in the park, I think a couple of you do it. Jeff does, and I think Steve does, and us. It's really, it does work really well, but there's a bit of a trick to it, so let me know if you want to do that, and I'll give you my, I think you have one too in Tahoe Park, I'm pretty sure. And so I'll give you my two cents on how to make that work. And then this is really important. I don't know if you guys know this or not. I tried to tag some of you in tweets today, but for summer food for kids who are school-aged kids, there is a program, it's a national program. When the school districts or the libraries or whoever's going to serve kids, when they register with the USDA, which they will all do because then they get compensation for it, the USDA worked with a, a company to put that all together in one data platform. So anywhere in the United States, you could text the word "food" or comida to 877-877, and you will get back a list of the closest places to you where you can get food during the summer. So 10 of the Sacramento Public Libraries are spots that kids can get food, and Natomas Unified School District has a good number of them. I think SacCity does too. But this, if you know people in different states around the country, they could text the exact same thing. And I tried it myself to see what would happen, and it's a really good service. It's a really good way to find out where the closest place for free food for your kids during the summer is. So I just wanted to share it with all of you, in case you want to share it with your constituencies.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Food Truck Mania returns this Friday, June 9th, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at McKinley Park. While you're there, check out the new bike racks that we installed by the pool. These were paid for by the money we earn at Pops in the Park, which is a great program. We had our first Pops concert this last Saturday at East Portal Park. It was attended by 4,000-plus people. It was really quite a wonderful event. Our next Pops in the Park concert is this Saturday, June 10th, at Bertha Henshaw Park on 45th Street in East Sacramento. The John Skinner Band will be playing the Food, Food Vendors Beer Garden, and the waiting pool will all open early at 5:00 PM. And lastly, I'd like to wish my fabulous assistant, Jennifer West, a very happy birthday. I would not be where, where I am today without her. Literally, I'm sitting in this chair because she told me to. I'm lost without her knowledge and grace. She is overqualified for her position, but she graciously works for me so that I may do the people's work to my utmost ability, and she wrote that.
I hope she was watching. Happy birthday, Jennifer.
I hope she wasn't watching.
Oh, that's right. If she's out having a good time. Okay.
Thank you.
Vice, Councilmember Gueda, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of announcements. We, on June 12th, Oaky Park, that's this upcoming Monday, the Oaky Park Pool will be opening. So opening day is at 3:00 to 7:00 at Oaky Park in College Greens. And also, save the date for Thursday, June 15th, for the Penthe Town Hall. You're welcome to come out. We're going to be focusing on traffic issues and discussing the issue of traffic concerns with our traffic department that day. So come on out there. Also want to wish a happy birthday to my intern from Consumers, from American River College, Lydia Lara, who is not only a member of the American River College soccer team, but is known on campus as Senator Lydia Lara, since she just got elected to the student senate there. So congratulations to her, and I would also respectfully request, Mr. Mayor, if we could adjourn our meeting today in the, in the, to Penny Costanza's desk.
Of course. Of course, we will. Thank you. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff has started something. With the Happy Birthdays, my administrative aide, Yvette Cumberland, also celebrated a birthday, and she didn't write anything for me to say, but I did sing, and the entire staff sung "Happy Birthday" to her today to honor her 25th birthday. So I just want to acknowledge her real quick.
That's 25 also.
I think so. I think. It's all, yeah. All good, good. A couple of announcements. We're going to have a community spotlight. We do this every month for community business in the Greenhaven Pocket, as well as Valley High area. This month, on Thursday the 8th, from 9:00 to 9:30, we're going to spotlight VCA Greenhaven, which is located at One Valene Court. We're going to be spotlighting, it's our local veterinarian office, which takes great care of your pets, and so we encourage you to come on out and support that office of VCA in Greenhaven. And then on the 9th of June, which is Friday, we have the D7 Hot Spot. It's going to take place at the School of Engineering and Science. We encourage teens between ages of 13 to 19 to come out with their friends to enjoy a great evening from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM of games and snacks, and lots of, great opportunity to socialize with their friends in a safe environment. And then Saturday, June 10th, Pocket Greenhaven Family Barbecue. So if you're looking for some good fun, good food, and kid-friendly activities, it's from 10:30 to 1:00 at Garsha Bend Park, located at 7654 Pocket Road. We're going to have barbecue by our local firefighters, with a chance to connect to family and friends, as well as Artabie will be out there doing reading and posing for pictures. So come on out for a great time. That's Saturday, the 10th, from 10:30 to 1:00 PM at Garsha Bend Park. And my final announcement is, if you're trying to get healthy and you want to do some walking, you can walk with the Health Education Council and the Valley High Hill Zone, and they have a Valley High Walking Challenge. It's going to take place on, oh, it's going to continue all the way until July 31st. It's every single Saturday from 9:00 PM at the Valley High Park and as well as the Mesa Grande Park. So that's my announcements.
Very good. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Scheneer.
Thank you, Mayor. Few announcements, and then a very quick, good story about our homeless that happened this weekend. So tomorrow night, I just want to congratulate the Juneteenth celebration is at the Railroad Museum in Old SAC. On Thursday night, there is the Del Rio Trail Public Meeting Number Two. This is about converting the Del Rio Trail, four-mile trail from what it is, which is basically overgrown weeds, to a bike pad trail. And that is at Pony Express Elementary School. On Friday night, we're also doing a Food Truck Mania at Bell Coolidge Park, and that's at 5:00 PM. And also at 5:00 PM, we're dedicating the Hollywood Park sign. We've got a new sign going up there. Also, we had a really nice thing happen on Saturday. Saturday morning, we were doing a cleanup on the Del Rio Trail. Southland Park Neighborhood Association organized it, and we probably had about three dozen people show up. And as we were picking up trash and kind of moving north on the trail, we saw a homeless individual who had been camping out on the trail. I notified Regional Transit, and Henry sent out Norm, who sent out some of his folks, and made contact with the individual, figured out that he was on a list, and called his mother, who was in Livermore, and she drove down from Livermore to pick him up. So we got to reunite a family. So a really nice story.
Great.
I just want to thank the RT, RT and the police who came down and really took care of that.
Shows what's possible. Thank you, Jay, for sharing that. Councilmember Carr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're having a Health and Safety Fair this Saturday, the 10th, at Providence Place. And hardly the Health and Safety Fair wouldn't be worth mentioning, except it is at Providence Place. Providence Place is on the corner of Center Park Providence Place is on the corner of Center Parkway and Mac Road. It is the epicenter for infant mortality in our county. In the past, there have been a lot of gangs in that complex. Almost every social ill that you can think of was happening right there at Providence Place. It's on the east side of Mac Road, and it's the, the complex that we decided to tackle to turn around. We took that complex because it had the highest calls for service in the city for police service. And we are bringing in all of the social providers, the people who can make a difference to help turn that complex around. We're doing the same thing at Amherst and Meadowview. That complex is called Whispering Pines. And that complex was once known as Danger Alley because so many people were getting hurt there. So on the bookends of Mac, we're attacking them, working them in the middle, as well as working Cedar Ridge now and Stoneheads. I would be discouraged if it weren't for Phoenix Park. Phoenix Park was absolutely the worst neighborhood in, probably in California, and now it is totally turned around from Franklin Villa to Phoenix Park. In fact, we're having a movie night there at Phoenix Park to bring the kids out. So we know how to do this. It's just a matter of putting the resources together, putting the plans together. We can turn these communities around.
Absolutely.
So Providence Place, Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00.
Very good. Thank you to the members of the public. Thank you to our fine staff. Thank you to the members of the council. If there's nothing further, we're adjourned.